Okay, I got seven o'clock. Call the meeting to order. Will the reporter please call the roll?
Counselor Salisbury?
Here.
Counselor Savage?
Here.
Counselor Fleck?
Here.
Counselor Stenit?
Here.
Counselor Irvin?
Here.
Counselor Roberts?
Here.
Mayor Gowing?
Here. Item three, items to be added to the agenda, there is none. Item four, appearance of interested citizens for items not on the agenda. We didn't have anyone sign up, correct?
Okay.
Okay. We'll go down then to item five, public hearings, there is none. Item six, consent agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
Have a motion with a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Item seven, resolution ordinance. Resolution, authorizing support for Economic Development Administration competitive tourism grant application. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everyone. The Economic Development Administration is accepting is accepting applications for an EDA competitive tourism grant under the fiscal year 2021 American Rescue Plan Act Travel Tourism and Recreation Notice of Funding Opportunity. The Bohemian Foundation, a nonprofit organization, wishes to partner with the city to apply for this grant to fund capital improvements at Bohemian Park. These improvements will focus upon the the entry triangle to the park at the intersection of 10th and Main and include a hardscaped interpretive area with an entrance courtyard, a full-scale replica water tower with interpretive water features, six stone pillars reflecting the five foundational topics of Bohemian Park and the area's Native American history, and an art walk through a local sculpture garden. The EDA tourism grant request will be for a million dollars towards a total project cost of 1.2 million. The city match of engineering and planning, staff support, utility fees, and permit fees is estimated to be 50,000. Bohemian Foundation currently has contribution commitments in excess of 300,000 that cover the 20% grant match requirement. It is necessary for the city council to adopt a resolution to authorize the support for the submission of the grant application to the EDA competitive tourism grant program for Bohemian Park. So the recommendation is to adopt the resolution. And if there's any questions, I'll answer.
Do we have a resolution number?
Two zero five six.
Counselor Fleck?
Mr. Mayor, move that the council adopt Resolution two zero five six.
Second.
Have a motion with a second, is there any discussion? Counselor Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Stewart, when in the most recent Land Economic Development meeting, we were talking about these EDA grants and what the pool is for what's coming to Oregon or this region. Do you have a sense of the competitiveness of this grant? I guess is one question of kind of the ballpark of whether or not you think this is going to be realized? And if not, does this project still have legs to go forward? And with that, definitely support this application and excited for it. But do you have any more insight on all that?
Yeah, thank you for the questions. The Bohemian Foundation's been using Christina Lund for the grant writing work on this, and she's been in regular contact with the lead person for this grant fund. It's my understanding that there's in the neighborhood of 52 million dollars in the state of Oregon for this one grant pool. Because the Bohemian Foundation is quite a ways down the road in the planning for this and also the committed funds for this project, it's going to make it very competitive. In fact, the gentleman has shared with Christina that the project is a lot further along than a lot of the other entities that have been inquiring about it. So we're feeling very optimistic. It's my understanding it's first come, first served. So as they review the projects, that they'll fund them, and when the money's gone, then they'll have to wait till they replenish the funds. So there's still a considerable amount in there, and we feel pretty positive about it, that the chances are, we're receiving all positive signals from the folks that will be grading the grant and making the recommendation. That being said, the second question was is that if we don't receive these funds, the project will continue forward. We, as stated in here, have currently 300,000 dollars in pledges. We'll probably change the approach a little bit to go out in the community and try to get donations for materials and various different things. And still optimistic that we'll get a considerable amount of it under construction this next spring. So we'll see the project moving forward. It may just take a little bit longer to get the total funding and get the project completed in its entirety.
Any other questions? Counselor Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Stewart, I was wondering if there was a way that we could use, and I don't know if you guys kept anything from cutting down that large redwood, but would it be appropriate to use one of the large rounds from that redwood to put on display with a little something about the history of that redwood within this development project?
Yes, it's very possible. It's, we haven't at this point declared a place for it, but there are areas in this, as there's a there's a walkway that's right now could be used for historical artifact items or sculptured art. That could be an area where this a round from the tree, which we have kept multiple, I think we have three different rounds from that large redwood tree. And of course, we'll have lumber at some point here in the near future that'll be milled from a starfire out of the actual logs that were taken to them. So long answer is, is that yeah, it could very well be a place for that to be displayed.
Thank you. I'm thrilled about this and really excited, so thank you for bringing it to us.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I love this whole project and idea. I know the foundation's been wanting to do things with this park in this manner for some time. I applaud it. I think it makes our community more of a destination. I think it will help economic development. And I really hope we get this grant so you can move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Seeing none, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Salisbury? Counselor Savage?
Yeah.
I can't hear.
Yeah.
Sorry. Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Counselor Stenit?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
Counselor Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Gowing?
Aye.
And Mayor, can I interrupt for just a minute? On the consent agenda, the city attorney had pointed out that there was a correction in the minutes for September 27th, and I didn't catch up before you guys went through it. On the second page, it said Counselor Fleck said in the September 10th, 20, it should be 21, and it says 12 minutes.
Okay.
So we amend your motion to make that change.
So Mr. Mayor, I move that we amend the consent agenda to reflect the change of the city recorder just mentioned to us.
Second.
And were you the original second?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have original amendment to the original motion on the consent agenda with a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, brings us back. Item seven B, resolution to issue sidewalk order on Taylor Avenue. Mr. Bradspie?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, counsel. At your last regular meeting, counsel received two separate complaints about the conditions of the sidewalk along Taylor Avenue from South 10th to approximately east about 675 feet. In your packet, I listed the complaints. One complaint even had pictures of the injury. The second appendix, I showed a sight map of the area in question. At your last meeting, also, you discussed the issue with staff, and city manager stated that we would come forward with a proposal and a possible resolution to a future meeting. After city manager and I talked, we felt it was the sooner the better if we wanted to try to get sidewalks in yet this year. So I'd walked the area of concern, noticed several areas of disrepair missing driveway approaches or disrepair, as well as a rolled curb along that section of Taylor Avenue. I included sections. Some highlights were the sidewalk is about four and a half, was four and a half feet wide. Since I've been employed with the city, the city sidewalk standard has been five feet. Property, I did notice the property owner at 1054 Taylor had replaced his sidewalk within the last five years. That was the, I saw the old sidewalk in the 2017 aerial photo. Again, so that was kind of the background. As we get into chapter 12.08, Sidewalk Construction and Alternative Regulations, describes a process which the council can follow to require sidewalks to be constructed or repaired. And I included that section of code in your handout. To highlight that section, it states that the property owners are responsible to construct, repair, or improve that are adjacent to the sidewalk. Sidewalk shall be constructed to city standards. If the council does issue an order, it will end up directing myself as a city engineer to provide notice to each property owner. The notice will state that the property owners have 30 days to repair or construct the sidewalk, and also include a statement that says if the work does not get done or neglected to be done, then the city has the right to come in and assess those costs and do the work. And then the last two sections of the code state procedures of how to place a lien. I want to interject a few things here. And bullet point number three, the city's also going to include a statement in the notice that says, you know, the city has to hire a contractor to replace the rolled curb. That's on the city. We're going to explain to the property owners that if they want to choose, they have an opportunity to let the city's contractor come in and do their sidewalk as well if they do not want to perform it. I have gotten one estimate from a contractor. Each of the 11 lots are 60 feet wide. Basically, to remove and replace the sidewalk to a five-foot standard, the cost was estimated to be three, let's start, $10.50 a square foot with the 60 feet in length. It will cost the property owners for removal and replacement of sidewalk 3,150 dollars. The driveways vary in width along the properties. That cost came to $18.50 a square foot for the driveways. Again, that's only the distance behind the curb to the side, to the front of the sidewalk that was only four feet wide. The code also says that that you can only charge prime as interest rate versus in other sections of code, it's prime plus two if you go into like an LID. So I've basically outlined, if council does issue an order to replace the sidewalk, what we're going to say, the gentleman at 1054 Taylor Avenue, like I said, we felt he's made an investment to try to improve his property. Staff allowed the four and a half foot sidewalk basically because that's what he was matching to at the time. And we propose that the city pay for, since he's redone at the area that he's replaced, as well as pay for the curb. Attached is a draft resolution for your consideration. I see that there is several members of the of the area involved that are online. So I don't know. And before I get into the recommendation, I want to state I got one email today, and hopefully it's passed out. I've talked to two people on phone, the phone, asking questions. So again, I see several names that were on the mailing list that are listening in. And staff recommendation is for council to consider the resolution and pass it if they so wish. Any questions?
Yes, I'd love to hear that from the public.
Even though no one signed up?
Oh, that's a good point. It's up to you, Mr. Mayor.
At this time, I'll go ahead and open up any public comment to neighboring citizens in that you have three minutes each to speak. And we'll do this for 15 minutes. Does anyone wish to speak?
Eve, I think, am I saying it right? I saw that she had her hand raised, Your Honor.
Go ahead, Eve.
Thank you. I appreciate you taking this time to let us speak. Just wanted to say that I didn't have the opportunity to sign up to speak as I was out of town right before these notices came out, so I didn't get back into town until this afternoon. So as far as with the sidewalks go, my intention with this was to kind of open up dialogue on what, you know, we could, to open up communication with the city. I was not anticipating this to kind of all of a sudden feel like this was falling down on my fellow neighbors' heads. And don't, and I don't agree with having 30 days. I feel like for most of us, especially during these unprecedented times, that that is a very undue burden that many of us cannot
meet.
Meet within 30 days of that decision. I talked with the gentleman at 1054, Wildish was the one that replaced those sidewalks because they had damaged it with one of their trucks during the construction of Harrison. So he was not, unfortunately, the person responsible for the improvements on that sidewalk. So, but there was talk with a couple of other neighbors, I think that Ron had spoken with one of our neighbors about a grant. And considering the financial position that majority of us are in from what I have talked with my neighbors briefly since I've been home today, it sounds like the consensus would be to go for that grant.
Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Gary Castle at 1112 Taylor Street. We definitely need a new sidewalk. I was just coming from the approach that I was looking up some stuff earlier that said that the law came about for us to start taking care of our own sidewalks around like 1990 or something around then. But this sidewalk stems way past that. So I was coming from the point that they want us to re, or take care of the sidewalks, like it'd be better to start off fresh with a new sidewalk to take care of, you know what I mean? Not the sidewalk that's been here since, obviously, this is the first sidewalk, it seems like, besides the rolled curb and everything else. I was talking to Ron earlier, and he was very descriptive on everything, and he was very helpful with everything on the phone too, so thank you about that. But I also was concerned that that law came in place around 1990 something. So I figured that a new sidewalk should be grandfathered in.
Anyone else? Mr. Bradspie?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to clarify conversations I have that you brought up. I was talking to Mr. Castle, and you know, the complaint we received by email listed how come the school did not pay for the project? And if you apply this ordinance to it, it's kind of hard to make the school pay for a sidewalk across the street. So again, because of that ordinance, we did not require anything from the school to be on the north side of Taylor Avenue. The second question in the email was safe routes to school. I explained to Mr. Castle that, you know, the original corridor for safe routes to school was between the middle school along South Fourth to Harrison to the high school. With the grant application, they gave us an idea where the points would be scored. City staff felt that by extending the project up to the corner of the new elementary school, that would give us bonus points to get the grant, which we did. And I explained to Mr. Castle that the city could apply for another safe routes to school project. And again, I don't know when the cycle comes up for safe routes to school. Again, to apply. You know, and I don't remember all the criteria that was involved in, you know, getting points to be scored on that grant, but that's where the mention of the grant is coming from.
Counselor Fleck?
So, gosh, sidewalks have certainly been an issue in our town for a lot of years. You know, and there's also a huge number of properties throughout the town that, you know, never did put in sidewalks. And so that's kind of further complicates this situation. I definitely am in favor of, as we're able to, fixing sidewalks throughout town. And I think as Ron was just indicating, the grants probably are not going to be available for this cycle, which means that the low-interest loans by way of lien is probably the, you know, the best alternative in this situation. I do actually agree, though, that I think we should modify this to allow folks into the next window when construction would make sense. I think it'd be cheaper for the residents to go in with the city when they're doing it because of the economy of scale. I think the city's value in that is going to make it worthwhile. But I'm also totally open to giving six months for folks to redo the sidewalk if that's what they want to do as well, that you get them into the spring and into, you know, some more dry weather. So that would be kind of my position is that to go forward, but to modify that resolution from one month to six. We also had some great conversation Friday morning about other neighborhoods throughout the town because there are a lot of situations where either trees have lift sidewalks, or they're just crumbling, or any number of factors. And the city could not afford to do all of these if they all went to a lien. And so what we're going to have to do is just take these as we're able. I do think this is going to be certainly a high priority, as the city manager mentioned Friday. And so while it's a tough pill to swallow, I do think it's one that we need to move forward on. But like I said, I am totally in support of modifying the time to construct.
Counselor Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate Mr. Fleck's comments on that. When we were first talking about this, I was kind of surprised at the 30-day window, but it was explained. We have a narrow window if we're going to try to get something done this weather permitting season. And the the thing that we're up against are repeated injuries on the sidewalk from folks. So we're having to balance the safety of people walking on these sidewalks with how quickly it can be done. That being said, I would also be in support of extending the window. I would hope that homeowners would take advantage of of that to find the best deal. And maybe that gives a little more time to have some real comparisons between quotes. Thank you, Mr. Bradspie, for having some of those prepared tonight so they can make a determination as to whether or not they can kind of handle this themselves for cheaper or get in on that group rate. That being said, I, you know, it's just one of those things that is unfortunate, especially with the different directions of misunderstanding about what the situation is between what a grant allows for and how a grant is written. And, you know, I just think of a grant as really just this big bonus that really improved the city that we didn't have to citizens directly pay for. But expectations put in on that and why something wasn't included or another, it's just a real blessing for that, those that did get it taken care of because these really are the responsibilities of the homeowners. And yeah, just realize that it can be a burden. It's going to be a real improvement, especially as we prioritize all the different sidewalk situations around town. And look forward to being on the other end of it and having that that improvement done throughout town. Also, be willing to lend a hand if anyone wants to reach out, if they choose to do it themselves. Feel free to contact me and be willing to help out where I can, have some experience in that area. Thanks.
Mr. Myers?
Excuse me. I do want to note, though, too, that any kind of extension on time is going to put some risk on the property owners because they are responsible for the maintenance of those sidewalks, and injuries that occur could be a liability against them and their property insurance. So their homeowner's insurance, or if they have, don't have it, it'd be against them. So they may want to be aware of that, too, as they desire to stretch out the length of time.
Mr. Fleck, or Counselor Fleck?
So as a quick question, can I just make a motion to adopt Resolution two zero five seven, amending the one-month timeframe to six months? Would that be an appropriate motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Counselor Stenit?
I think I can support the extension there. I'd like to do this as gently as possible. I can understand that this feels like a raw deal for some people that came to us looking for help and were not informed of a very pleasing situation and how this is going to be resolved. I think the six-month window would still give them time to decide if they want to risk injuries in front of their house and their sidewalk. I do think the sidewalk needs to be replaced and that recent incidents have brought that to light and made that pretty obvious. And like I said, I understand this. It's a significant expense, especially in a very tight window like that. So I think we need to do it, but give some time for for things to happen. But give some time for, for, for things to happen.
Mr. Myers?
And I did want to tell you that the prime rate is three point two five right now today. So that's, that's where we're at on prime. Just so you know what that, that level is.
Any other, Mr. Brasby?
Just, I'm going to throw it out here for counsel to realize, I asked two contractors and only got one back. We're still pursuing the second contractor to see if, if the first bid or the first quote is, is reasonable. So we could still have a discussion with the property owners about, you know, a contractor doing it. So just to keep everybody in the loop.
Any other comments before we call the question? Counselor Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, I know we have a few concrete contractors in town. I'm just wondering if we're reaching out to, to locals for this, for a bid as well. Thanks.
Councilman Irvin, yes, I, I reached out to a local contractor. With six months, I guess we can reach out to some more local contractors just to get an idea.
Eve?
Hi, thank you. Yes, please just keep us abreast of anything new with, you know, any bids or anything like that. Because I think, you know, it would be great for the neighbors to be able to, you know, discuss that. It seems like maybe having something done all at once is most beneficial cost wise and everything else, just to have somebody do it all continuously. So if that way, if we have the time to, to do this and to be able to get together as a community, as neighbors, to, to make that happen for each other. And I don't know if we can personally look into anything like, I don't know if there's any other type of grants out there or anything else that, that's out there that, you know, if you guys have any ideas that would help us, you know, for those that might have a little bit more of a financial hardship to try to cover the cost of that. Point is in the right direction, we can kind of help do some research on that or anything.
Okay. With that, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Solzby?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Counselor Stannett?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
Counselor Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Gowing?
Aye. And while these residents are still on, online, if you guys want to reach out during this process and, and need some more information, give me a call. You can call the city and get my cell phone and call me directly if you need to, if you don't have it. So feel free to call me. Okay, brings us to item eight, Business of the City Council. Item A, Municipal Judge Performance Evaluation. Mr. Myers?
So it's that time of year for the, the judge and you have the form and information for him, his evaluation form. And so it's time to either decide to approve the evaluation form as it is or we did note that there were some items in the past years that have received a, a number of sixes, which are the not applicable positions. And we just wanted to know if you wanted to continue to include those on the form with the potential that you might have some opportunity to, to be able to apply those or if you wanted to remove those from the form. Once you've approved the form, then you can also set an executive session and conduct his evaluation in executive session.
Which one? Counselor Irvin? Counselor Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm in support of keeping the items. I'm typically embarrassed every time I have to give a six because I feel like it means I didn't really do my job well. So I'm motivated to actually get those answers this time. That being said, if, if when looking at them, nobody sees the value in those, those questions on their own.
I think Counselor Irvin locked up.
He's frozen.
Counselor Irvin, if you can hear, you locked up. If you could, if you want to continue?
Don't think you can hear.
Any other? Counselor Fleck?
So I actually agree as well. I think that I just keep the form the same. And, you know, I think we can each try to reach out and try to get those answers. You know, and we can always bring it up again next year if we want to look at, you know, revising the form. I just, I think it'd be easier to keep the one we've got.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Solzby?
I'm sorry, I can't turn on my camera because I have slow internet. But yeah, I, I'm in favor as well. And I do like the idea if, if at all possible, if someone does come with questions, if those could maybe be emailed to all of us, answers on, that would be very helpful.
I agree. So,
Counselor Fleck?
So I'll just move that we continue using the same form for the judge's evaluation this year.
Second. Have a motion with a second, continue to use the form.
Want to do one motion for both of them, set the date as well?
Oh, and what was the date we were looking for? November twenty-two? No.
Yeah, for executive.
Is that what we were thinking of?
Yeah.
Okay, so I will also include that we'll hold the judge's evaluation on November twenty-second at six P M.
Does that seem to work for everyone?
It does.
Okay, so we have a motion with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Yeah. Sorry, it's going in and out. Like, I don't know if the internet's just going down or.
Yeah, you keep freezing up.
Sounds like, got a couple with internet problems tonight. It could be us. Okay, so item B is a city manager annual performance review. Mr. Myers?
Before the meeting at six o'clock, you held a executive session to review the performance of the city manager for the year. And now it's your time to discuss and determine what you're going to do there.
Counselor Fleck?
So, uh, great jo- uh, great job for the city manager. We just held executive session, went over that piece of it. As I'm looking through the compensation adjustments for our other staff throughout the city, it looks like department heads. We're at four percent. And so what I am going to move is that we amend the city manager's agreement by an additional four percent. And do we need to accept the evaluation form or evaluation as well?
No, you're. Not the four.
Yeah, you just, you, you need to have a, a brief summary that just, and you've kind of done that, yeah.
Okay, so, and I assume that we will include that in the minutes. So we'll include the summary, summaries of our evaluation in the minutes. And I'm going to move that we, we're not. Okay, I'm going to move that we do a four percent increase. I'm struggling here, sorry.
Okay.
Oh, effective July one, correct?
Of this year.
Of this year. The previous July one.
Fiscal year.
Second. We have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion on that? Counselor Irvin, can you hear now?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I believe we're just talking about the, the increase for Mr. Myers in relation to the evaluation. Is that correct?
Yes, the motion was a four percent increase effective July one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, concerns of council? Anybody? Counselor Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give a quick report on this Lane Economic Committee meeting today. There was a number of things we talked about, including economic development, grants, just kind of the process. And then the, the comprehensive economic development strategy and the, the document that we produced recently. But the standout presentation today for me came from Eugene Chamber of Commerce relating to homelessness study. And the fact that the chamber has taken it upon themselves to basically start researching the, the overall situation. They developed a pretty comprehensive document. They interviewed all of the agencies in the area that are working on the, the issue and have made an assessment and recommendations and next steps. I had that document shared with me. I intended to distribute it before this meeting. But I think there's, there's a lot of, I think, opportunity for us to maybe make contact with, with Eugene Chamber and discussion as it relates to our situation and the decisions that we may have coming up. So I wanted to make that available and, and what their overall assessment is that there's a general hopelessness in the community that this will ever be resolved. And they're working basically to restore, restore hope through strategic and planning of tactics to, to actually go in and figure out why, what the problem is. And I know there's been a lot of organizations attacking this same problem, but very seemingly little coordination across all of them. One of the things that stood out to me in her assessment was that in discussing with each independent agency, one of the questions they asked was, what is, what is the goal at the end of this? Towards whatever work you're doing in relation to homelessness. And she said there was almost zero overlap in, in the actual goals. So that, there's a lot of, a lot of room there to, to bring people together to coordinate some effort. So I had a little glimmer of hope myself from that discussion and, and I thought that was quite fruitful. The water tours were the other item, but Mr. Myers addressed that early on. It sounded like possibly January restarting that. Some of the people had reached out to ask if we're ever going to do that. Or if that was over now. So I guess I'll look forward to that. And that's all for me. Thanks.
Anyone else? Counselor Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Mr. Stewart. I emailed him earlier this week. There was a walk sign that had been turned on Fifth Street. So when you're walking east on Main Street, the, the walk sign was facing north. You couldn't, you couldn't even see it. His crew quickly went out there and fixed it. And I also wanted to ask about the property on Main Street. I had a constituent ask me if there was something that could be done. When they drive north on S Street and look left, which would be west, there's some trees that seem to be in the right of way, right around the corner. So as people are coming around that corner, coming into town, it's really, really unsafe. They're driving really fast coming from the Cottage Grove Lorraine Highway. And so I know that you're working on it, Mr. Stewart, but do you have an update for that?
Counselor Savage, I, I asked our utility crew to go out and do an assessment and check and see what they could, what needs to take place. And I just, I haven't heard back from them. So I'll, I'll check with them in the morning.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? I just got one I wanted to bring up. Mr. Myers, if you could, well, if you want to. The, my, my wife wants to see the council do a contest of, like how we do the lights at Christmas time, to do a Halloween one where we go around and, and pick, get people nominated and do that. So is that something that, that maybe the chamber would partner on and do and council wants to do that? Then she would love to see that. So.
It's a great idea.
That's all I got. So, item nine is Business from the City Manager, City Manager Report.
And I'll mention, I'll mention the Halloween decorations to the chamber and to Shauna and see if they want to partner and do something there. We do have an opportunity coming up with a Halloween Hootenanny in Bohemia Park on the twenty-ninth. We have decided with the staff that we're going to go ahead and, and bring our pumpkins back from the dead and, and have our pumpkin decorating, not carving, because we do more than just carving, a decorating contest. And instead of them being displayed at City Hall, we will put them on a flatbed trailer in our space in Bohemia Park for people when they walk by in the Hootenanny. So if you do want to help judge that, it may be a little tougher because we don't want to take those out a day in advance or more. We'll be taking them out the day of. If we took them out the day in advance, they'd be in the pond or smashed all over the place. So we'll take them out the day of on the trailer. And if you wanted to come by and judge them that, that evening on the twenty-ninth or afternoon on the twenty-ninth, that would be great as a part of that. But it is, we are having the Halloween Hootenanny from three to six on the twenty-ninth. We also have the model train show coming back with the Willamette Cascade Model Railroaders. So after a brief hiatus because of the pandemic, they are coming back and they'll be in the Armory. So if you're curious about how, what improvements have been made in the Armory over the last year and a half, come look at the trains and check out the improvements at the same time. It should be a lot of fun. It does work with the requirements of masking and, and distancing because generally they're open from, I don't have the time, ten to five each day. And so the time and the spacing is pretty, pretty flexible. There's not a lot of crowds and there's lots of room to move around and look at the trains. So it should, it should be a good opportunity to get out and have some fun there. So just putting that out. We have just put out, well, first off, we received a letter from an employee who has set a confident date of retirement. Our city recorder, Trudy, has notified that she will be retiring on December thirty-first coming up. And so we now have the job announcement posted this afternoon as well for the city recorder administrative assistant position. And so that's out there. We will be looking forward to doing a, a small little get together, probably December ninth. Well, we're sure it's going to be December ninth, Thursday, December ninth in the Armory. And so all of you counselors are definitely invited as well as staff. So if you could mark that in advance, probably starting somewhere around five thirty in the evening on the ninth. Wish her well after her many years here with us and, and working. And as a result of her work and our other staff in the recording and going through their piles of boxes that we accumulate and, and stuff over the years, we have about a hundred, a hundred and ten boxes downstairs of various documents. We have multiple copies of things that we don't need multiple copies of. We have things that are thirty years old that we only needed to keep for a year. And so those things are in a pile in the basement and will be coming up tomorrow and going into a shredding truck. And so we'll be having room again in the basement for more records and more materials. It's kind of our annual. We try to do that every year on, on the eleventh or this Columbus Day, day when a lot of things are kind of closed already and it's a little slow, so we stay closed in the morning. So that's the results of this morning's work. Thank you to all of our staff that, that worked on that and, and helped with that. We did receive the grant for the, from D L C D for the Affordable Housing Study, Technical Assistance Study and everything. So we will be moving forward with putting together that. program and, and having a committee looking at the affordable housing projects and what's going on in our MPT and other programs and how they're making an impact or not, and, and having some recommendations. So we'll be coming back to you with some requesting people to be on that committee as well. The last item is, I leave tomorrow morning to go visit my granddaughter in Florida for her first birthday, so I will be gone for the rest of this week.
Okay. So we have no attorney tonight, no items removed from the consent agenda, we're adjourned. Good night, everyone.